I'd like to call to order the December 4th, Monday, 2023 City Council Work Session. We are joined by the Parks and Rec and the Planning Commission and Darcy from MIG to speak about the Parks Master Plan. If we could just quickly state your name and which group you're from for the record as we go around, starting with Terry.
Off Edrich Parks and Recreation.
Bill Blank Planning Commission.
Marty Markey Planning Commission.
Bernard Hart Planning Commission.
Ty Bailey Planning Commission.
Earl O'Vernwald Planning Commission.
Body Monkey Parks and Rec.
Nathan Hanner Parks and Rec.
Okay, and we are Tyler Miller and Megan Grayson will be here in time for our meeting, but probably missed the work session. We're going to spend about a half hour going over some detail of presentation and then we'll have some time, half hour or so, to answer questions. Darcy, MIG, if you'd like to take it away.
Hey, good evening. Everyone can hear me okay? I'm Shudensky, MIG. Thank you for having me here tonight. I have just a few slides to kind of give an orientation to the planning process to update the Parks Recreation Plan as well as just some content, some orientation to the document itself. There's now a draft for consideration, so that's what we're talking about tonight, the introduction slide. So again, short presentation, last presented here during a work session, I believe, in February. So we talked about amenities, desired amenities in each of the parks at that point in town at time, and now we have actual recommendations and a plan. We also had a good discussion at the April Annual Town Meeting. So we're kind of catching everybody up from that point in time, just some refresh introduction information. So the next slide, just to refresh on the project objectives, and this is an update to a current plan. So we're trying to reflect current conditions, include new parks properties that were not in the old plan. Consider areas that are to be going to be urbanized in the future and how those might best be served by parks. And then the kind of capper on the whole project is the Updated Capital Improvement Plan and a strategy for developing investments in your park. Five, planning process. I always regret how small this text looks for everybody, but suffice it to say, we're in the final phase of this, which is to adopt a plan. We're not quite there yet, but your feedback and consideration tonight will get us an even stronger draft to take forward and to actually adopt it as part of the city's comprehensive plan. So the first phase of process, inventory analysis, looking at existing strengths and opportunities in your park system. The second phase, we had a big community-wide survey. We called pop-up events in the community, tried to engage people at various events. We had some really great stakeholder interviews, some small group and one-on-ones with folks who are really passionate and have good ideas about the park system. So all that was Phase Three. Going into Phase Four, we had specific recommendations for each of the parks, each of the park properties. That ended up informing the capital improvement plan and then strategies for implementation. So with that, the next slide is just a tee-up for the fact that I'm not going to talk about any kind of the system inventory. You all are more familiar with that than I am, I'm sure. So anything from those first pages, pages of the plan, I'm happy to go back and talk about if you would like. Um, so next slide talks about the tools that we use to analyze the adequacy of the city's park system. One of those things was a strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, challenges type of analysis where we went out based on a tour of the park system with our designer, our parks designer, and the director of our Parks Recreation Discipline at our firm, to really look at kind of from a technical and professional standpoint, hey, you know, there's some amazing things here. There are some things that we're not seeing in other communities or things that are lacking that we think really could be amazing, given this particular park or this particular setting or your community specifically. So we did that kind of almost without public feedback, without talking to the community, sort of like on a technical level, what's great about this system? Where could there be improvements? It was that that exercise. We did analysis of how most people lived in proximity to the park system. Could they walk there? We know that if you live close enough to walk, you're going to use the park more often. So we did that analysis and mapped those areas that might be underserved. Sorry, I haven't been here. Wow. I'm a complete out-of-towner. And then the level of service analysis, which is a measurement of the sufficiency of the amount of parks, park land in your community, just how many acres you have per 1,000 residents. So it's an indicator of how well you're parked in your community, but just by volume, if you will, not amenities, not what you're getting, but really like, do we have a lot of acres for the people that we have currently? And also, are we planning adequately for our future, right? You know, you're a growing city. Um, let's see. I know that there were some questions about level of service and we had a lot of discussion with the community about whether or not it was adequate enough as a target, as an aspiration moving forward. So there has been some changes to that that number. There's also, we kind of wanted to show how this is getting in the weeds, so forgive me, but this is Table 3-1 in your draft plan. And then we actually have two level of service targets. Again, this is a planning tool. This is something to work towards and to kind of say, look at how you're measuring up as you move forward in time.
What page is that on, Darcy?
That should be... I did not write.
Twenty-six of the packet.
Yes, I think I have. I just didn't write them down. And we have kind of done the analysis with all of your acreage, including Vista, which is a really big undeveloped park. And that is the desired level of service. We also have a level of service that is a little bit more realistic for a 20-year timeframe, trying to get you to a tool that reflects what you would probably be able to develop in that timeframe. So we can talk a little bit more about that and how that's a tool for you. So community feedback, huge for actually developing a plan that reflects our community. So the next slide gets into that just a little bit. Again, we've talked about I, we talked about the outcomes of some of the outreach that we fund. Also Appendix B of your plan, some of that summary. Do you want to emphasize the involvement of the SCAPU's Parks Recreation Committee? We met several times with them to talk about some of the findings, some of the products, having them review and give us feedback on public outreach, helping with the public outreach, especially those pop-up events. So that was really important. You see some other things there. One thing that's not on this slide, and I don't believe in the appendix, but something that probably should go into the hearings draft is the outcomes of our stakeholder interviews as well. We have several really, we have a few pages of good comments that came back from those individuals in small group conversations, and those also really informed the work that we did. The next slide, some of the overarching themes that came out from those community conversations, the survey, et cetera. Really, the first two rows to the top that we heard the most about, how special SCAPU is for the fact that you have such proximity to nature, to natural areas, to what we would call more passive recreation, the walking, the hiking, access to the water, really important and people value that and do want to see that access enhanced. And then the other thing, sort of on the on the other spectrum of active is really a concern, or not a concern, but a desire for more activities, more spaces, more fields for youth and places for kids to play. So that gets us to recommendations in the plan. So the next slide. So these recommendations, again, just to remind everyone that they are founded in some updated policy language. So the next slide is the vision and the goals that are proposed in the plan. We're now on page 31 of the plan, 37 of the packet, I believe, if you're following along. So these are proposed goals and policies. They really haven't changed since the February work session. So the only thing that's been kind of continuing conversation has been some action items. So for each of these goals, there's a policy statement, and then there's policy statements which are in your plan. And then there is even another level of like, okay, if these are the city's policies, what are some things you could do to actually enact, enable, actually get there? And those have been edited and reviewed with city staff. And some of those are still in works and it's still a question of where those belong and kind of are they adopted in a comp plan situation or do they live in an appendix, say, of your? They're pretty in the weeds. We didn't put them in the plan itself. Not really good. Next slide. Let's see. So the recommended park system, this is where, again, the transportation plan, I would say the rubber hits the road, but this is really where the meat of the guidance is for you moving forward. So just to kind of reiterate, these are not recommendations that are, you know, just a great idea consultant thought it was awesome, just for parks planners. You know, these really do, or should, if they don't yet, reflect the community. Subject of, you know, I believe three SPRC meetings to look at specifically each park and the amenities proposed for them. Had many conversations with staff to make sure that we've got those lists right, that that's appropriate for SCAPUs. So each of the parks, we'll go ahead to slide, each of the parks has a vision statement, but the park is really meant to do why it's special for SCAPUs. And each of those parks, we have or there is a desired amenity. So these amenities, they should again fit the park, fit the community, fit the location, fit who its parks are supposed to serve. But many of the amenities will be aspirational. Fit, great if you could do it, be great if you could build it tomorrow, might, probably not, and maybe even longer term than the life of this plan. And again, this plan, it's a long-range plan. Twenty years plus, you will likely, and before you actually achieve all these things. So just to keep that in mind. Let's see. I don't know what my... So let's go to the next slide. Um, the one thing we did, I did not create a slide for each of the parks, but again, we can talk about each and every one of them and however we'd like. But Grabhorn really was, I don't know, the driving force maybe of this plan update. It was such an opportunity and there's been a lot of community conversations, some of which I've been privy to as part of this Parks Plan Update, of how to choose that property in the future. So it had its own separate and special planning process. But the outcomes of that process, the outcomes of the conversations with the SPRC, with staff, those amenities, that vision is now in your updated draft plan. So, um, to the next slide, implementation. So now you have a document that is an updated plan that includes what we heard the community would like. And this is an opportunity to vet that, to test that, make sure it actually does. But it should reflect now what the community would like. How do you make it happen? So again, long-range 20-year-plus plan. And you go to actually implement specific improvements and upgrades to your parks. Go to develop a Grabhorn or Commerce Drive. You want to make sure that it's consistent with the system that's envisioned, the system that's described in your updated. So the next slide talks about a tool that we've developed with staff, a cost model tool. Kind of beauty of this tool is that it's a spreadsheet. It's basically, you know, you click on things and things update. I mean, it's a really kind of powerful spreadsheet. It has the ability to adjust for changes to cost. So it includes or adjusts for cost changes going forward, and it includes assumptions for categories and investments. So there are some assumptions that, again, you can change the assumptions, but you update it or if you apply those costs to even another park maybe or another property that you don't have currently in this plan, use those assumptions for other projects, projects as well. So what it doesn't do, can't account for all, can't account for all things. So specific details will be determined as projects for us. There's many different factors that go into cost, and those costs will need to be accounted for inflation as well as just cost increases that, A, in fact, can be. That's sort of the caveat there. It's a bit static from that perspective, but that's what I have to share on that. Next slide. This is the phased implementation plan. Strategy recommended in the plan is to focus implementation first on Grabhorn, to take advantage of potential grant funding. So the city has an opportunity with grant funding to use the purchase of the land as a match for the grant awarded. It's a good opportunity. Also, an opportunity to kind of generate some excitement about something new in the community. Again, working on leverage for, hey, if we could do it here, think about the improvements we can do elsewhere. Next slide. So love to end on an up note, but challenge always is going to be finding funding for all the great things that are in this plan. So this is just a kind of breakdown of where Parks and Recreation gets funded from the general fund. Obviously, there, Parks Recreation is just one aspect of functioning and desirable and safe community. So, and it's just one pie. So there's, if you think of a pie, you're going to slice it differently. You're going to have to look at other things that the general fund needs to provide for. So the other thing available are system development charges, SDCs, but those are dependent on growth, on new development, and those fees are, those monies can be spent really on packs of new development on your system.
Yeah, quick question on that thing. They can be used anywhere within the city. Like if we build a development over there, it could be used to enhance a park or build a park over there. And SDC fees don't have to be in within a mile or within that close.
Okay, so Appendix C has the total capital cost needed to acquire, develop, and improve parks. And the bottom line is that the amount of money that's needed exceeds the amount that the city has available this back 20 years. So that figure summarizes really how the projects break down across the three categories. So the operational costs are summarized on page 62, I think, eight of your packet. And basically, the city budget's a total of about $465,000 annually. That's for personnel, materials, services, administrative costs associated with maintaining and programming. So we did an exercise of calculating a general estimate of the cost on a per-acre basis. And currently, there's 39 acres, four sites, Grabhorn, Creekview, Brownsey Trail, Chapman Landing, that are in a partially developed category. See on the slide, again, there's a dollar amount to how much it takes to operate a partially developed acre. At the completion of the plan, implement the plan, all of those three partially developed parks and the Commerce Drive Park property are going to be developed parks. So to maintain a developed park, again, you can see on the slide, that costs even more money. So the, kind of on top of that, Vista, Vista property will kind of move from undeveloped to developed. So a bit of term, a part of how we're categorizing parks as developed or undeveloped in that. And it's a way to kind of anticipate what you'll be needing to, in and operate, whole system as it develops. So there are, next slide, there are funding options. Appendix D defines what some of these options are. Again, general funds, system development charges, city has that available and is doing those today. There are other funding mechanisms that we talked somewhat detail at the Annual Town Meeting and at the last work session with City Council. And funding is going to be important to fully implement your plan. This includes both capital funding to build new parks and features, as well as ongoing operational cost of maintaining, making them safe, clean. And we talked about the Grabhorn opportunity with grant funding. That's, that would be amazing to get that and kind of build that property, build some energy and interest in funding parks. And, you know, if and when the city does ask voters for support on some of the other funding options, it's just important to keep in mind that it's not only capital for developing the park, but to consider ongoing maintenance and get it up once you have it. So with that, I think we might be to next.
I have one question, Darcy.
Sure.
Unlike an operating levy, in the city, if they were going to ask for one, could they expand that out to like our school district? Just our city? So we can only collect money from city residents or?
It has to be within city limits. So again, this is a draft. It's complete. I do have already some red lines for myself, little typos. So any comments, you know, again, even the smallest thing would be welcome. This feedback from the public, from the small, on this draft, and do another revision and get that ready for public. Understand that it's, that Plan Commission would be up in January with the registration for adoption to.
One question I just was thinking, Dave, too. The Commerce Drive property, we've got that list as a long-term. Is that one that we feel you can do more than, in more of a short-term, six to 10 years?
It would depend on what you select to do with it. That would drive the costs. Parking lots and things like that, I don't, I mean, that would, you'd be talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, so that would push it out. Building just some nature trails and some small things that you could access on foot are feasible. It would really determine what.
Right now, yeah, there is no parking out there really, other than if you're using the trail. Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have questions.
Take them.
Yes. Thank you very much for putting together this document and thank you to the Parks and Rec Committee for working on this. This definitely is important work and over the last few years, we've heard a lot about the importance of park or parks and recreation for the community. I had a couple of questions that, if we could walk through. So I understand that the last Parks and Recreation Master Plan, it was, the last year was 2017. So this, is that accurate? It was last finalized 2017? Okay, so we're looking for a revision to this year. Can you just summarize maybe for me, just if you were, I always use this analogy, if you were caught in the elevator with the president and he was asking you, tell me about SCAPUs and their parks plan. What would you say are the major highlights, the changes from 2017 to 2023 that we're considering here today?
Well, it's updating the inventory. So you have new parkland that's not in.
Grabhorn?
Yes, and Commerce.
Okay.
And it's a, actually, the implementation piece that really is new and not something that you've had before.
Okay.
So in addition, in addition to the cost model, we also have in this plan a process by which to consider improvements, whether or not to undertake them. And it's basically a two-prong approach or a model, which is you are looking to, for example, during this process, there was a property owner who was suggesting that they had property that they'd like to get. Were to consider, well, is this a good, is a good move for us to actually accept this property? You'd go to your goals first. It doesn't meet the new, the adopted, at that point, goals for our park system. And then the second screen of that process, there are different considerations, and one of those is funding and staff time. So the idea with this parks plan, besides, you know, checking in with the community, seeing what's happened over the last few years that might change folks' ideas of what they did. Again, looking at a growing community that's projecting, you know, planning here kind of, right even. And updating, you know, the facilities that you have.
Awesome. Oh, that's great. Thank you. I appreciate that summary. I was looking, as you were speaking, and you took us through the goals page on page 36 in our packet or page 30. It says goals and policy, and I noticed, as you were talking, I made note that you had stated that there's goals and policies throughout here. How are we able to tell the difference between what is a goal versus a policy?
Oh, that's interesting that you said that because we had originally a standalone document, a review with the public, the goals and policy. We had a flowchart of kind of what they each were, and I don't think we included that in the plan. And if you're questioning that, we probably didn't. did not. We could put that, could put that back in.
I think that would be helpful to understand what really is policy versus the goal, so we understand, like, when we are having conversations and having to make decisions, that it's falling within the policy.
Right, right. And it started really with the vision statement as well, which again, have that in the plan. So big picture, really high level, and then getting down to specific, like, well, this is, if this is our vision, then our goal is to get there, down a level, and then the policies level. So, yeah, that, I liked our graphic, and we can definitely put that back in.
Thank you. And then I have a question for the Parks Committee. I'm just curious to know, so since working on this plan, can you share with us, you know, we can't get everything, but based off the work sessions that you have, do you believe that this draft that we have is representative of the outcome of your work sessions? And if it is, could you please just share with me a couple of highlights? And if it is not, can you please share with us a few highlights? Open to anyone on parks.
Michael Sykes, I'm the chair, been the chair of the Park Committee for, what, three months? So I'm kind of new, so I'll defer to others, but I just want to say that my sense is that the process was very collaborative, and we had a lot of discussion about the different parks. And we're really kind of, Paul, and we're just talking, a lot of the, there's not a lot of difference between this and the other one. The most important things is that it quantified some of the costs, which is going to be critical when you, while we're trying to determine your STCs for parks, which is critical. No, I think it's, I think it's a really good work in progress, and you think that we would like to add more projects, but recognizing that you have financial constraints, and that being one of the most critical issues that kind of limits our ability to build parks. And I don't know, anything else? Paul, you want to?
I agree with what Mike was saying, although I would say the Parks Committee was more of a passenger in this than a driving force of this plan. We did meet with a consultant a few times, but the last time we talked to him was in March 26th, where we gave our recommendations for level of service. We have never looked, seen this plan before today. I think we got it a few days ago. We never discussed it as a group. We have been working with Dave on some great things, and so, and I applaud Dave for all his efforts on this thing. But there were, there is much more that we expected or we're hoping for, more aspirational. We talked about community center, at least to get it in the plan somewhere, because we know there's needs from the community. There's things in this plan that we never discussed, like paving in Grabhorn, paving over the green area, that one parking area, not Grabhorn, but Veterans. This is, this is called out as a $780,000 expenditure we never discussed. So from the Parks Committee aspect is, we gave input, but by no means did we say, yep, this is our plan, yet. I kind of hope we'd have a work session internally and say, okay, given all the input, you know, and us seeing this now, can we maybe make some revisions? But that has not happened as of yet.
Isaac, could you clarify when this was sent out to everyone?
Yeah, so on November 21st, I sent a link to a sharedrive, to council and all the committees involved with this document, with the draft plan in it.
And to clarify, what I meant is that we, as a group in this, in our committee, never reviewed this as a group.
We didn't review it as a group, but I think most of the stuff that is in there, there might be some changes, and it'd be nice to have input on that. But I think that we put it together, recognizing that there's a, you can accomplish some of the stuff that's in this 10-year plan, you're going to be doing really well. I mean, trying to finish up Grabhorn and Chapman Landing and some of the, I mean, the nice thing is the city has some very nice properties that just need to be developed, and I think this plan allows that. You know, a community center's a fabulous idea, but it's going to be really expensive, and I think, I think the nice thing about this plan, you can always come back and modify it in the future, but I think the thing that we felt was probably the priority from the whole plan was to try and move Grabhorn forward. Any other park members have anything? JJ, you've got anything you want to add?
Is this where a community center would be in a parks master plan versus a facilities master plan, or combination of both?
We think it's more of a facilities.
I agree.
But we can still address it and track it with that way?
So, my name is JJ Duran, I'm the vice chair. I thought it was supposed to be your 7, so I apologize for being late. That's my fault. And I actually was, I'm an original member of this committee and actually worked on the original master plan. So we had a rare student, what was his name?
Nick Sund.
Huh? Nick, is he here?
No.
Okay, Nick is great, he was great. So it was a really great process. You know, we had a lot of big blue sky ideas and not the funding strategies in place. And I, you know, I also kind of see some of those challenges with this. We talk about funding, but we don't talk about how to actually get there. You know, I think Mayor Backus made a great point about getting a levy for the city of Scappus to do that. And, you know, I also spoke with Kim regarding the community center and how ultimately, I truly believe the way this is going to get accomplished is to create, either doing a levy, or to have the city allocate more funds to parks out of its current or future budgets, or to actually do a Parks and Recreation District, which would not only encompass the city of Scappus, but the outlying areas as well. And to be able to do those things successfully, and I say this with the experience of having worked with the city of Scappus and developing the marketing plan and executing that for the fuel tax that we successfully passed, is that it needs to have, it needs to have a real, it needs to have meat on the bone in order for people to vote for it, and it has to make sense, and it has to, it has to be really resonant in the community before those things happen. And that takes time, money, and frankly, expertise in those types of measures. So that's just kind of my feedback. I think having a community center is, is really an essential thing to have, and much like the city of St. Helens, that does have a Parks and Recreation District in place, and does have a tax base for that. I think those are serious financial considerations that we need to address and implement. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I've got a couple of questions. So, thank you, JJ, for those comments, and I guess that's what I'm wondering, kind of taking this to the next step, to look at what could be some viable funding mechanisms for achieving some of these goals, development of current lands, and potentially getting some of these, you know, pocket neighborhood parks. Is that something that we would maybe address in goal setting and say, hey, staff, we'd like you guys to make it a priority to explore some of these funding mechanisms? Like, how do we get to that point?
Um, yeah, I mean, I think it would really be a discussion with council, because I know that when we had discussed some funding mechanisms in the past, and it seemed like there was a ton of appetite for it, however, we didn't know what the results of the school bond were going to be either. So now that we know that, maybe that's a slightly different conversation. But, you know, I think there's a lot to be said about timing, you know, how you put that together, how you're really, you know, engaging the community, and, you know, seeing what their appetite is essentially to do that. Yes, when you get a parks district, sure, you expand the boundaries of where you can draw tax funding from, but then you also have a separate entity running the parks. So, you know, there's trade-off there as well. Grants are great, but also, you know, there is a limit to how much we can get. I mean, and this is something we would, you know, bring back at a later date as well, but as we're working through estimates, even for Grabhorn, we're concerned that even with the grant, even if we got the full amount, we could be looking at even, you know, being short still of that phase one part of that park. So just with inflation, with what we're seeing with construction costs, things can be upwards of, what, 30% above engineer estimates that we're seeing regularly for almost every project we've done in the last couple of years. So it's only going to get harder to build these projects, unfortunately.
But to build Grabhorn, if we do get a grant for some, then you might have to take out a loan and finance the rest of it to complete the job?
Yes.
And how do you, how do you pay?
That's entirely possible. Yeah.
One, on local option levies, you can't pay for capital operations?
I believe there are actually capital levies as well, but generally, when it's, it's an operating levy, then it's for operations.
Compression.
Local option levies are going to, if you are in compression, they will get compressed first.
And it reads here, too, special taxing districts, they're limited to half of 1% of, you know, per thousand dollars. So that, they, you know, they could go out for their own levies, but it looks like they're limited on what they can ask for.
Right, and I, yeah, and I don't, you know, I'm not an expert on what the special district would be like, but.
Yeah, do you hand over the parks to a parks district?
Yes, typically, yes.
I mean, how do you get residents to help pay for our park, use of them when they're using the facilities, which I always have, but without charging for usage?
Right, and then, you know, and also, we have to be very careful about when you're talking about, if you go down the road of trying to charge for usage, because that does eliminate some of our recreational immunity altogether when you start charging. So there's just lots of fears to consider.
I do have one follow-up question on kind of the resources that we've got currently allocated. So Marcy, I think you showed a pie chart that showed 13% of the general budget overall is allocated towards parks and grounds. And then on page 68 of the packet, city estimates approximately 7% of the budget is spent on mowing and maintenance of city right-of-ways. So, I mean, I think those are two really interesting data points, and how do they kind of shape up against cities of similar size? Like, how is our budget right-sized for the amount of acreage and amenities that we need to maintain and eventually build out?
I don't have a comparison.
I mean, I, I mean, for the purposes of what we want in our park system, I wouldn't say the budget is, is right-sized, but we're living within our means, right? I mean, it's, we have a very constrained budget, and the general fund is especially challenging. So I wouldn't say that we have the funding in there that we would ideally like, but, you know, particularly with, again, with costs rising, and also, you know, with some of the hits that we, as a city, are taking from our urban renewal area, which is taking money out of our general fund, it's very hard to increase any of that, and we're seeing over time that that's, you know, becoming more of an issue. So.
For to raise our general fund for parks, it'd have to come through something.
Right, and that's where, you know, I think the discussion then comes in of saying, you know, you need an operating levy, you need a bond, you know, whatever it is, however you want to look at that, but.
But I think it might, I mean, if it's possible to get at even just a few cities of similar size and see kind of what they're allocating from their budget for, you know, similar maintenance and that, it would be helpful just to understand kind of, just to benchmark where we're currently at.
There will be a lot of caveats to that, only because of, showed that slide of cost for approved. So even if similar-sized community with a similar amount of parks acreage, it's kind of that level of service exercise, again, you can carry yourself against other communities, but it only goes so far as to really illuminate how well you're providing parks for your people. So.
We could see if there's, there's a 13% or 18%, but we wouldn't see how, if it's like undeveloped parks, or where they're spending most.
I mean, it's just more of a, you don't know if you're really getting apples-for-apples comparisons, you don't, you know, I mean, if you, I guess if we could, you know, figure their budget, look at various things, but, you know, so you're, you're not likely to find something that exactly mirrors our situation, that would necessarily be a good example. That's the challenge.
I'd just like to know, are there other cities at 5% or are they at 20%? Is there a big difference? Are we in that ballpark?
I was just going to say, eight years ago, you didn't even have a park department, and you've developed three parks in the last eight years, so you've really made a lot of nice progress. And I think one of the things that city was striving for is to try and really build some value with parks, because frankly, you know, there really wasn't a lot of value eight years ago. There, what, you know, park next door wasn't even developed. So I think you've made a lot of progress, and we felt like it was going to be, as far as the financing of parks, it was to have something that we have to sell, something we have to offer. I think you're getting there, and I think you're getting close, and I think this is an important discussion about how to fund them, because the Park Committee did our SWOT analysis, that was number one thing, is how are we going to fund all of this stuff? Everybody recognizes how important they are, and I think when you do your comparison with other cities, it's important to take a look at the assessed value of those cities, because if they have a lot of industry, they got a lot more money to work with than you do. So keep that in mind when you, when you do that. And I think honestly, the solution, or one of the most important solutions to building parks for Scappus is going to be the success out of developing some of this industrial property and a little more of a base. I think we heard Terry tell us that a number of times during our meetings.
Yeah, that's the one I was, yeah, go ahead, Jen.
I, I, Mike said it is true, I mean, there has, have seen changes in the parks lately. My question, of course, everything that we would propose, it's all the bells and whistles, but it comes down to money, right? And so my understanding is that, first thing is Grabhorn, and my hearing, we're sure. So I think we should really focus on how we're going to get that done. And if we just start step by step, taking, I'm trying not to eat the elephant, trying to eat the elephant in bits and pieces. And so, as I think, to come together, to figure out how we're going to be able to, I'm not sure what the gap is. Is it 100,000? Is it 500,000? Is it? And, and you guys mentioned a tool, right, that's forecasting, that's helping you forecast?
Cost modeling.
Cost model or something? Is it some, is it a software?
Well, I think she was referring to the spreadsheet that we used to build the Capital Improvement Plan, the kind of general gap right now that we're seeing for phase one of Grabhorn's about 1.7 million more. Well, even just the first phase, as we're going through the cost estimates, it's already grown, and it's about 3.5 now.
And so is there, and for share, everyone, Alex, how does, does the, for example, we want to increase the percentage from 13% to 14% or 15% of the whole pie? That's something that is done internally? Can we do it as a, with council? Is that done with the budget committee?
All the budgets are definitely, you know, go through the budget committee process and are ultimately approved by council, once the budget committee signs off. This is something that, you know, this particular budget would be prepared, you know, by Public Works, by Dave, and then presented to me. And then, you know, Carol and I compile all of them and basically make it work, make it all fit. But as with anything, if you increase that, you cut from somewhere else. And fortunately, you know, when, when we sit down to look at that, I really struggle to cut from those other areas as it is. So you're really looking at a situation where you need another funding source, to be honest. And, and, you know, really even just a complete Grabhorn within the amount of time, but that we could still use the grant match, or the, you know, the purchase price for grant match, you're really looking at probably needing to take on debt for that. And then just as a general comment, too, just for, you know, comparisons of other cities, a lot of other cities also have higher permanent rates than we do. Our permanent rate is very low. So some cities just inherently have more money to work with, period, than we do, without even going out for bonds, operating levies, or anything like that. So, because, you know, the permanent rate was what it was, and if you lucked out and had a high one, when, you know, 550 went in, great. If you didn't, just didn't.
That does always interest me, and which ones have special districts? Which ones have park districts?
And that's true, too.
Because I would think if they have a park district, they're, they're growing from a larger group than just within city land.
That is correct. And just another thing I just wanted to point out is that, the other challenge that you have with Scappus, which is also the reason why a lot of Portlanders are moving out here, is that property taxes are probably about half of what you pay for Portland. You know, my farm on Southeast Island, it was an unbelievable amount of money. And so, and so that being said, if you did do a levy, I mean- And so, and so that being said, um, if you did do a levy, I mean, some of the ways that you would market that or make it attractive is say, look, we have these really low property taxes, we're not asking that much, and here's all that you get. Because the other side of it, I believe, is that a lot of people that do move here from out of area have a certain expectation of what parks are. When I was appointed to the Parks Committee eight years ago, I couldn't believe they didn't have like a Parks and Rec, I, I had, I couldn't believe it. And, you know, thankfully, uh, you know, Mike did such a great job of putting together the committees and, and really encouraging us early on that, you know, we really took stewardship of those positions. But, you know, it's, in the end, it's all about how, how you market it to the population base, how, what amenities they're actually going to get and can you deliver? And I, you know, I don't mean to come back to the fuel tax, but the, the truth was, is that we, you know, the city delivered on fixing streets and sidewalks, which was the primary purpose of having that tax in the first place.
So I'd ask Dave, you know, looking at this, what do you think about this? Does this, you know, and do you see it working?
Be more specific. It's a pretty broad discussion.
The Parks Master Plan, I mean, does it give you enough direction? Do you feel that it, it answers the questions and allows us to kind of move forward, set some goals? Um, we're not going to come up in seven or eight months or five years and say it's not in our Mark, Parks Master Plan, so we can't do it. I mean.
This is a necessary tool. We have to have it moving forward. If one thing has come clear over the last few years, there was no true sense of direction. The city acquired Grabhorn, there was all kinds of opinions on what should be the priority. To me, this helps give you guys as council roadmap to make those decisions and then we can look at the funding and come back to you with what, what those funding scenarios are, such as the shortfall or whatever the case may be. We write at the moment, it's a bleak thing, you know, building can calmly, we depleted our SDCs. Right now, we have about $150,000 in SDCs and 50 that we set aside in the budget to pay for a new park. You know, we're floating at 200,000 of a $3 million project here. So, you know, I, I don't know what, if, if you guys want to pursue a levy, that's great. Um, you know, if you want to take on debt, that's a choice that the city's got to make. But, you know, this is, this is step one.
This allows.
Get everything out in front of us and build from.
Also, we need this for grants. We're going to pursue grants, we need the project to be in the plan, and so that's really important too.
And if we have some growth and we, and we do have, um, UGB expansions or different growth, does this allow for that or would we have to just update this? I mean, if there's a piece of property, south edge of town that just comes available, it's not in here, we can.
We can amend this. Yeah, we can add things to it in the future, but that's a big deal, you know, showing that you have something in a plan, um, very attractive to grant funders and oftentimes is required.
UGB and everything to me. Recognize that. And that's part of the five additional neighborhood parks. They're out in that UGB.
They're, they're asterisks. They're floating. So that, but again, if you are, uh, who are faced with a wonderful gift, but that wonderful gift doesn't really serve the purpose, it might serve a different purpose, but, but that spelled out in the plan really, like go through that process and make that decision based on some.
Mr. Fedrich?
Uh, just for some clarity here, so, um, people are talking about level of service. Uh, in 1998, um, we were about 5,000 people and so was Sandy. Their Parks Master Plan, uh, called for 17.6 acres per thousand, um, and they actually hit 22 acres per thousand. And during that time, they, uh, I mean, that then and now, they've grown quite a bit. And a lot of that had to do with the amenities that they put into our, in their town. Uh, we sit around five. Uh, the national standard is between 10 and 12 acres per thousand. And we did a great job from 1998 to now to kind of catch up, but even our 2017 master plan calls us out and says, we are woefully behind level of service, uh, acres per resident and also amenities per resident. And there's national standards for this, how many basketball courts we need, how many pickleball courts, we're really far behind. My fear is, so as a Parks Committee, we recommended 15 acres per thousand. And that is in the desire, uh, the aspirational quote unquote, uh, how it was called. I'm also in the 50-year plan and we were told last meeting that the 50-year plan will be, this will be feeding the 50-year plan as five acres per thousand. No new park land will be needed for the next 20 years. This is what we were told and Kim was also there. Our fear is in 20 years, park land, our land in general is going to be much more expensive. We're going to be even more behind the other cities. I'm also in the economic development committee. We know that we're trying to attract, uh, businesses here and one of the biggest things are schools and amenities. And if we are continuing to fall behind towns that were our size, Sandy, Malawa, et cetera, we will be always second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth on the list. That is our concern.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, just final request, uh, given what you shared in terms of the timeline, uh, when you were hoping for this to come in front of council for adoption, um, I would like for there to be consideration that there be one final review, uh, with the Parks and Rec Committee, um, before it comes back for review with, uh, with council. Um, given what was been shared, that there was, they would like an opportunity to perhaps take another look through. Yes.
So to provide a little clarity, you're not quite getting the full story. So in August, we did come before the Parks Committee, we presented the entire CIP, we went through every park, piece by piece, bolt by bolt. We talked about every amenity in there. We also have a special Parks Committee to talk about level of service. Minutes where everybody on the Parks Committee agreed with the level of service that's in here, although it was adequate. So these aren't things we're making up. These are well-vetted Parks Committee. There's, there's public record to justify that. So I just want to make sure that you understand, there's, there were meetings, unfortunately, Paul was not in attendance.
I, I was in attendance. March 26th is when, when we had the, uh, level of service discussion. We did not hear back from the consultant that time. I know that you, Dave, we went through the each park and that was great. As, as to, hey, what do we think about each park? But we didn't go over the whole plan, we didn't go over what.
The plan didn't exist until a couple of weeks.
I know, I didn't, I'm not saying anything, I said we never had a chance to actually go through it as a group and we got, that's what I'm saying.
But the way these go is, it's kind of chapter by chapter, if you will. So we came to you with a component. We got the feedback that the whole committee agreed on, brought that to make, they implement. We bring the next piece to you, the CIP. We work through it as a group. Everybody agrees, everybody unanimously agreed on that, brought that back to make, they built this. All of these components have been reviewed piece by piece by piece. That just got collaborated within the last two weeks and you're seeing at the same time we're all seeing them.
That's exactly what I said.
Forward though, um, what is your goal timeframe now? Are we looking at another meeting to look at the draft or are you at the time, if there's no changes, you're ready to adopt? Are we able to have them look at this now and, and, and get back to us with questions or feedbacks or emails?
So, so right now, the, um, so tentatively, we talked about this going to planning commission in January. Um, can, yeah.
I just want to make a quick point of clarification. Um, timelines that we showed, January, February, so January Planning Commission, February Council, um, for my purposes are flexible. It's just whenever the plan's ready, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's neither here nor there for me. I think that the challenges for applying for the grant and the thought was to have it, the plan adopted, uh, before we're actually submitting that application. Um, the other component I'm waiting on to hear, Darcy, I copied you on this, um, asking DLCD, we may need to update, since we're adopting in 2024 and the way noticing works, um, because we're not noticing of the adoption in 2023, we may need to revise the dates for the plan to incorporate 2024 through 2044. Um, it's, it's just a technical thing, but I'm not, I don't have concrete dates. It's really the grant application that's driving it.
That, that's really what we're looking at. Um, initially, the schedule for this project had it completed in August or September, but there was a request, if I recall correctly, um, from the Parks Committee for a longer period for public engagement. So we lengthened the schedule. Um, so now we are really up against it in terms of this grant cycle, if that's something you're wanting to pursue. We still have one more year after that where we could pursue the grant. However, this gives us a little bit of cushion if we go apply for it and we don't get it, we still have one more year to try for it. If we wait, you only get one shot and then that grant match is gone and you have to come up with that cash on your own. So that's the schedule that we're working against and those applications are due in April.
Yes.
Excuse me, I was already, we already agreed to the.
Sorry. Um, I'm going to ask Mike, Mike, do you feel that as chair of the, of the, of the committee, you guys feel that you guys need some revisions to, not necessarily, I mean, yours can meet, but to give back to Darcy and then, and then they can present?
The answer, but Terry's been playing.
Oh, sure.
Well, I thought we had agreed.
We need to pause.
Forward grant and start the project. And as we went along, it was three plans, it never got discussed any further. We hadn't totally committed to any of the plans, exactly how we were going to use the property, but we were committed to get, go after the grant because we're coming up with that deadline.
A plan, a plan was voted on.
Yes. In the CIP meeting, we had a plan that everybody agreed that we were going to build from. That's what we've moved forward with the consultant. We will hire a consultant. They will start to design building off of that general layout where things kind of work. And then that, when that plan is designed, that will come to you for review and edit.
Um, we need to end this meeting and I, we can pick it up again in just a few minutes. Works like after consent agenda, you have committee updates. Can we?
Do you want me to?
Need to go any further?
Do you want me to answer a question?
Right.
Um, I thought we were fine with it as a group. There, there were some questions. The thing I like about the plan is you can't, we can't change it. And again, as I said earlier, if we can finish Grabhorn and we finish Chapman Landing and a couple of the other properties we, and if we want to do a, add something in the, in a couple of years, it's, can, Grabhorn wasn't part of it. Picked it up and I think it's a roadmap and like Dave said, I think it gives you some vision.
At least to get going on the first one.
Anyway.
Um, yes.
If I could just really quickly clarify as well, um, as Dave said, these, this plan is developed building on previous work. Um, and there have been modifications and certainly a read-through is always appreciated. Uh, but the new, the new news stuff, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, is really implementation. It's six pages and of that six pages, we've talked about the funding, we've talked about funding options as part of the annual town meeting, as well as with, uh, with council and planning commission in a work session. So, uh, I think the really new stuff is the phased implementation, what you're tackling first. Um, the components of Grabhorn are critical to that because that's the first piece. If you're not on the same page for the first piece, then things kind of disintegrate. Um, but really the, the new content, uh, that hasn't really been, um, made in public is, is really just in that implementation and even that, a lot of that information will be familiar with people. Process.
Do we have enough information going forward? Are we good or do you want to, do we need to talk about it anymore?
We're okay. I, I do have a question, maybe I can address this with Lori offline, but I do have some concerns that there's no additional land being incorporated in the 50-year plan.
And I can touch on that after we reopen. I don't want to delay.